I haven't heard from Ken.
Good evening.
Can you hear from Tom?
Good evening, everyone.
Can I hear from...
Good evening. Before we get started, I'd like to welcome Father Reginald Simmons from St. Aden's Episcopal Church in Milton to lead us in our invocation. And we're fortunate to have his son here with us tonight.
Good evening, everyone. We bow our heads in a word of prayer. Let us pray. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in this city of Milton the Spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you being here. Okay, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, March 5th, 2018, to order. Sudi, if you'll please call, roll, and make general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the March 5th, 2018, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting, you would like to provide public comment either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment. You are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided the individual has filed a notarized affidavit with the city clerk that they have the authority to speak on behalf of the organization prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Peyton Jameson.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Koontz.
Here.
Councilmember Laura Bentley.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morik is absent for the record. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome to City Hall. We're glad you're here tonight. Sudi, if you'll please call the first item.
First item this evening is approval of the meeting agenda.
Okay, I have a motion for approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as reported.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Hewitt, second from Councilmember Koontz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, Sudi. Do we have any public comment tonight?
We do not.
Okay.
Is this a general, general?
General.
Okay. This is generals for Scott.
Excuse me, our next item is public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There's no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes for remarks. Okay, Sudi, if you'd please call the first speaker.
Our first speaker is Mr. Scott Reese.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I am Scott Reese with Brumalo Racing Associates, doing business at 1-3685 Highway 9, Milton, Georgia 3004. If you could indulge me tonight, I have two items, so I may push the time limit, but I'll try to be as terse as I can. Item number one, the newly passed reordnance. I met with city staff two weeks ago. Every single project that I have in the hopper is noncompliant. I met with staff to find out kind of solutions through no fault of their own, a catastrophe, whatever we want to call. During the process, as you all know, our city arborist suffered health setback. So I don't know what the disconnect, but anyway, the 60% coverage is absolutely undoable on acre lots and on the three acre lots. I submitted, I think, eight plans. They're noncompliant. One has a pond on it that eats up a third of the lot. There were no provisions provided in the ordinance for those situations, or a long-stemmed driveway that doesn't allow. So, that being said, I was told the recourse is to go before the border zoning appeals. The border zoning appeals in the document says that you must have extraneous situations. These aren't extraneous situations. These are normal-sized houses on the city of Milton with, you know, a standard septic system that requires 8,000 square feet of field line or the square footage in there. So, I'm, I guess, seeking to find my redress. It is now policy that we submit everything and then go before the board of zone appeals. I would like to think that was not the intent, and it was just kind of a drop-through. I attended at least four of the meetings early on, and I tried to stress the fact that we needed to look at some real-world site plans and not just a situational overview. So, that being said, please, if you would, communicate with staff to find out what I need to do to go through. But at this point in time, every individual site plan, everything I've got going on is dead in the water, and if we have to go through the border zoning appeals process, that means a two-month, at least, process for advertising and setting up meetings for each individual house. And these are houses on three acres, houses on five acres, and one-acre typical lots. So it's not just extreme situations. All right, that being said, that's the reordnance, so hopefully we can come to a, some sort of remedy on that. My other situation, I have a 90-year-old client who has owned a piece of property off of Arnold Mill Road since the early 1960s. Carter and I have discussed this a few times through the years. Problem is, the man's health is rapidly deteriorating, and he lives in Metter, Georgia, down in southeast Georgia. The property was served at one time by Old Holly Road, and in 1965, 1966, there were some estate problems, and Fulton County agreed to do away with the old road and build a new road. And there's a dedicated 60-foot right-of-way. The road never was built, and the man has 17 and a half acres that was landlocked via governmental caveat. And the road has not been built, and we need to find out a way, you know, I understand we can't just, you know, the guy's telling me, "Well, I just need to build a driveway down." Well, they're not going to let you build a driveway down, the public right-of-way. So, I know Carter's trying, but the gentleman is extremely upset. He says, you know, he's been working on this off and on for several years, and I'm not providing him with any answers, and so if we can get a legal resolution to this created right-of-way where the road was never built, that landlocked effectively this piece of property, I would greatly appreciate it. Like I say, the gentleman is 90 years old, and his health is greatly deteriorating, and he does not want to leave this problem with his wife at his passing. Thank you so much for your time, as always.
Thank you. Sudi, do we have any other speakers?
That's all, sir.
Okay, if we can move on to the consent agenda, if you could please sound the items.
First item is approval of the February 21st, 2018, regular city council meeting minutes. Agenda item number 18072. Next is approval of a Parks and Recreation Department Athletic Association Manual and Facility Use Agreement between the City of Milton and Hopewell Youth Association. Agenda item number 18073. Next is approval of a Parks and Recreation Department Facility Use Agreement between the City of Milton and All Smart Kids. Agenda item number 18074. Approval of the revisions to the Memorandum of Understanding for the North Fulton SWAT Team. Agenda item number 18075. Our fifth consent agenda item is, sorry, approval of an agreement between the City of Milton and A1A, Let's Get Tropical LLC, for performance of Beach Bash at Bell at Bell Memorial Park on June 16th, 2018. Agenda item number 18076. Next is approval of a services agreement between the City of Milton and Mere Electrical Contractors, Inc., for certain electrical services citywide. Agenda item number 18077. Our seventh consent agenda item this evening is approval of a task order to provide construction inspection services for land development activities. Agenda item number 18078. Our final consent agenda item this evening is approval of the following subdivision plat. Rising Star Stables Land Lots 987 and 1030 at 13200 Bethany Road, Minor Platt, three lots, 7.53 total acres, .339 lots per acre. Agenda item number 18079.
Okay. Do I have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Jameson, with a second from Councilmember Hewitt for approval. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, and Sudi, for the record, Councilmember Morik has arrived. Okay, we'll move on to reports and presentations. Sudi, if you'll please sound the item.
This item is recognition of students graduating from the First Citizens Government Academy. Ms. Courtney Spriggs.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you know, my department of Outreach and Engagement is always seeking to strengthen the sense of community we're so proud of here in Milton. The foundation of that sense of community is people building relationships. They, them building relationships with each other, and us building relationships with them. What makes Milton unique is that all of us, as a city, you are elected officials, and we, as city staff, seek to openly and effectively engage our citizens in innovative ways. As we had the idea, the Milton Citizens Government Academy was designed as a seven-week course. Weekly, we would introduce citizens to staff from city departments, including police and fire, finance, parks, community development, public works, and more. Department staff would educate those citizens on city functions, and relationships were built and strengthened as a result. As you all know, meeting people in person and communicating face-to-face is invaluable to building those relationships, but it's not always the easiest to facilitate. To be very honest, as we planned this, I crossed my fingers that we'd be able to fill the first class and that word of mouth would grow the academy. Fortunately, to my surprise, in reality, we sent out information about the academy and ways for people to register on a Friday afternoon in December, right before the holidays, not primetime for getting people to engage. By Monday, every seat in the class was full. We had a waiting list for additional academies, and people begging to take part. We expanded the class to accommodate as many as we could. The students were selected on a first-come, first-served basis, and I think it speaks to the quality of Milton citizens that we ended up with an amazing class full of positive, engaged students who couldn't wait to learn more about their city. They were attentive, they asked great questions, and they couldn't wait for the next week's class. Not only did we have incredible students who learned a lot, but as departments prepared their presentations for each week, they collaborated with each other, they collaborated with other departments and learned more, learned things about other departments they didn't know prior to that collaboration, giving them a new perspective. When staff who were presenting met the students on the night they were assigned, they were all, they all came back encouraged and motivated by the class's eagerness to learn about their department's functions and tasks. So I always have high expectations for the programs and events that Milton puts on. This inaugural Citizens Government Academy class exceeded all of them. I want to thank, again, these students for participating, choosing to spend their precious free time, learning about our city. I want to thank our, my fellow Milton staff members for so thoroughly and enthusiastically sharing the information about their department. And finally, you, council and management, for encouraging programs like this that grow our unparalleled sense of community here in Milton. You'll meet the rest of the class in just a minute, but let me introduce John Duke. John and his wife Joanne, next to him, both work at Milton High School and were some of the first applicants. I mean, he's going to speak on behalf of his academy class. Thank you, John.
Thanks, Courtney. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. It was very easy for Joanne and I to get motivated to join the First Citizens Government Academy class. We had just come off Citizens Police Academy graduation about a month before that, and we thoroughly enjoyed it. And as we finished that, we said, you know, we hope the city does things like this again. And then like a month later, we see this email come out from Courtney, and Joanne works at Milton, and she was like, "I'm going to print out the applications, I'm going to scan it, you scan it back, I want to get it over there, I want to make sure we get in this class." So, we're really lucky that we did, and we didn't have to get on a waitlist. So, what I just wanted to say really was, you know, when we came off the Citizens Police Academy, it was, it was so well-run, and I saw Lieutenant Ward back there, and the whole force is just special. And we were like, "This will be really interesting, and it'll be nice to be able to participate in the first class and maybe help them work out the kinks and everything else like that." And that's the only level of disappointment Joanne and I had. We don't have to help anybody work out the kinks. These guys nailed it. These guys absolutely nailed it. It was so impressive, engaging, dedicated, committed, enthusiastic, way more than, than we ever, ever could have expected, you know? We so appreciate the dedication of all of you guys, the time that everybody committed to put this thing together, being here in the evening. Every presentation was enlightening, every presentation was enthusiastic and very interactive. We enjoyed being up at the fire department immensely, and the work that those guys do is tremendous. And it was humbling, because we had an exercise in one of our sessions, it was our zoning session, and we got an exercise to basically, here's a plat, and we want you guys to lay out and develop the Strawberry Fields project, you know, and we were like, "All right, watch us go to work," you know? And afterwards, we were really, really thankful that there's a zoning department and people who really know how to do that, because what we came up with and what y'all came up with is night and day, you know? So, I mean, the only thing I really want to say is, keep it up. We love living in this city, we love the communication, we love the dedication. Going back to the tax battles that happened during the summer, when the mayor was there all the time, I saw Council Koontz there all the time, and just the dedication that you guys all have. I, I, I hope, I hope many, many cities could model what we have here, both in terms of the enthusiasm and the commitment that y'all do. So, we don't have anything to add in terms of enhancing the pilot, just keep it going. And I'll say this again, because there'll probably be something else coming in an email eventually, but we look forward to the next Citizens Something Else Academy. So, thank you all very much for your time and for doing this. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, John. Thank you, John, for sharing your experiences, and, you know, what's neat to me is that not only our staff gets to interact with our amazing citizens, but then also our citizens get to share in the quality staff and the great people we have here, so it's a, it's a great mix. So we appreciate you guys doing that. Also, I do want to thank all of our staff members that, you know, made the presentations and whatnot, and I hope you guys that participated saw what quality individuals and how committed they are, so we're very fortunate. The Citizens Government Academy not only provides our opportunities for residents to learn more about our city and how we go about work, about our work, but also allows our staff to make lasting community connections with those that they serve on a, on a daily basis, and as John said, there was definitely some connections and all that, so. And for all you graduates tonight, just a big thank you for your desire to learn more about our city and our government and taking your time to do that. You're basically invested in our community, it's, might be our replacements here, so we hope you guys stay engaged and involved, and we really appreciate that. At this point, too, I'd like to ask if the council could, could join us with the graduates up front and make the presentation.
Should Courtney be in the picture?
Thank you guys very much, we appreciate it. Maybe you guys can give us your input on the next program you want to see. No, I'm being serious, be good to get some input, what you'd like to see. Thanks, Chuck. All right, Suti, our next item is first presentation, will you please read the first presentation items?
This item is consideration of RZ 1801-2915 Web Road to rezon from T4 Open to T5 to develop a 105,170 square foot self-storage facility on 3.339 acres by Piedmont Atlantic Capital LLC. This is agenda item number 18080. Next is consideration of RZ 1806-U1801-VC1801-3505 Bethany Bend to rezone from OI Office Institutional to OI Office Institutional, a use permit for a private school, Section 64, 1831, to increase the size of the existing school from 6,000 square feet to 9,500 square feet, and the number of students from 150 to 220 students, and a concurrent variance to delete the landscape strip from the 20 feet to zero feet where the existing turnaround is located. Section 64, 1090A, on 2.89 acres by Wizirium LLC. Agenda item number 18081. Number three is consideration of U1802-U1803-VC1802-12655 Birmingham Highway to request a use permit for apartments, Section 64, 1839, and a use permit for senior housing, Section 64, 1834, to develop 42 condominiums on 4.37 acres at a density of 9.6 units per acre, and a concurrent variance to delete the required 300 cubic feet of separate contiguous storage space for each dwelling unit, Section 64, 1839-8, by Strawberry Fields, Milton LLC. Agenda item number 18082. Number four is consideration of ZM1801-VC1804, Southeast Quadrant of Birmingham Highway and Birmingham Road by OHC Birmingham LLC, to request a zoning modification and concurrent variance for the following. Request to modify RZ 2004-116 Condition 2A to the revised plan dated February 2nd, 2008. Second, request to modify ZM1403 to delete Condition 6C, the reference to the Village Green. Third, a concurrent variance to delete the 75-foot undisturbed buffer and 10-foot improvement setback along the south property line of the mixed zoning district adjacent to AG1, Section 64-1142A3B. And fourth, a concurrent variance to reduce the Village Green in the southeast quadrant from 13,000 square feet, Section 64, 1324B. Agenda item number 18083. Our fifth first presentation item is consideration of RZ 1802 to amend Article 19 Crab Apple Form Base Code to amend Table 8A Building Function, Agenda item number 18084. Next is consideration of RZ 1803 to amend Article 19 Crab Apple Form Base Code to amend Table 9 Specific Function, Agenda item number 18085.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the reading of the first agenda items as read by the city clerk.
Okay. And just to clarify, what Suti just said is, be sure and pack a bag and bring your lunch. All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Coontz, and I believe a second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. So, tonight, we don't have any items under a public hearing or zoning agenda, so we'll move on to unfinished business. Suti, if you'll please call the unfinished business item.
This item is consideration of an ordinance to amend Appendix A, Parks and Recreation Fees and Other Charges, Chapter 34, Section 24 of the Milton City Code, Agenda item number 18065. First presentation was at the February 21st council meeting, Mr. Jim Craig.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you is a request to modify Appendix A of Chapter 34, which is our fee schedule. What we are proposing is to delete the Deerfield courtroom as a rentable facility, and now that we have the Milton Country Club, to make the four tennis courts something that can be reserved and rented by all citizens of the city of Milton. To create the pricing that came up with the tennis courts, we consulted with five different agencies in the area to come up with what would be considered a standard price, and it was between $3 to $5 an hour, and so we picked $5 an hour. It would still be open for anyone who simply walks up and wants to use it, but if a person has it reserved, then the receipt from the reservation would give them the priority over that, and pending your approval, we would then get some signage to indicate that to the citizens.
Okay. Questions, Joe?
So, Jim, I'm a little bit familiar with tennis courts and reservations and stuff like that, and I know that while the program is new, we just got these facilities, there might be some less interest, let's just call it, in terms of their actual use, but over time, I have a feeling that the required use is going to go up. We've seen that with other facilities as we, you know, put programs around them and do that kind of thing, and people become aware of them. And tennis courts are sort of a strange saying, most tennis courts have some kind of an online thing that they can use to reserve courts. Are we looking at doing that kind of thing, or?
Oh, very much so. We already have in-place online tools to rent fields at Bell Memorial Park, Bathwell Community Center, the Bravo Pavilion, and we are all ready to go and allow online reservation of the tennis courts through the same utility that citizens already use to rent facilities from the city of Milton.
So, it's the kind of thing where somebody could log in, reserve it, and get immediate feedback that their reservation's okay? Cool?
I don't know if it'll be exactly immediate, but we'll be working as quickly as we can.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. All right. Thank you, Jim. Do we have any public comment on this?
We do not, sir.
Okay. I'll close the hearing on that, then we're not necessarily hearing, but then open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Agenda Item 18-065, Consideration of an Ordinance to Amend Appendix A, Parks and Fees and Other Charges.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Bentley, a second from Councilmember Hewitt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Okay, Suti, if you'll please call the next new business item.
Next item is approval of a resolution for a grant application to the Department of Homeland Security for the Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program sponsored by FEMA, Agenda Item Number 18086, Chief Bob Ecker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. What we're seeking tonight is approval for a grant application through the Department of Homeland Security and FEMA through the Assistance of Firefighters Grants Program for the replacement of our SCBA's or our self-contained breathing apparatus. The 40 units that we own today were purchased during the formation of the fire department. Those units, those tanks can only be rehight or hydrostatically tested every five years up to a period of 15 years. So, we're coming to the end of the life of those particular units. Those units were built or manufactured under a 2002 specification. There has been an upgrade to that specification for 2008, 2013, and there'll be another one coming out in 2018, which will zero in on some of the firefighter cancer initiatives that are going on throughout the country. So, this grant program will allow us to purchase the new SCBA's or self-contained breathing apparatus without using the capital funds we have budgeted going into the capital fund, which our plan was, under the capital plan, was to purchase those in 2020. So, this grant will help us offset that cost. There is a 10% match on this, so the cost for these replacements, and we went with the high end of the grant, what we asked for in the grant, and that came to about $354,000, which is about a $35,000 match for the city, but in our capital plan, we had over $220,000 budgeted over a period of time as we put that in the capital plan. So, we're just seeking your approval for that application tonight, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, Mayor.
Any questions for Chief? All right, I'll open up for a motion.
I just wanted to say, that is some grant, so thank you very much for the time. I know it's a lot of effort to fill out grants, but I was amazed at the match and what we got, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Would you like to make a motion?
I would love to make a motion. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item 18-087?
Six.
Six, sorry. Approval of a, for a grant application to the Department of Homeland Security for the Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program.
Okay. All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley, a second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, Suti, if you'll please call the next new business item.
Next item is council authorization for the mayor to execute Form 4 for submission to the Department of Community Affairs certifying completion of service delivery strategy negotiations with Fulton County. Agenda item number 18087, Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, with some degree of pleasure and a little degree of irritation that we are finishing up our service delivery strategy negotiations that have only been ongoing since 2012. So, it's exciting, as the council is fully aware, service delivery strategy is basically a state law that requires us to work with our fellow cities as well as our county, Fulton County, to ensure that there are no redundancies or overlap in services. As you know, both counties and cities can provide what are considered to be municipal services now, and so a byproduct of that law was, the General Assembly said, work together to make sure that citizens aren't being taxed twice for the same service, makes a lot of sense. This negotiation has been heartfelt. Candidly, Milton had resolved the majority of its issues, literally, years ago, and one of the most pressing ones for the city of Milton was to ensure that it was very clear to everyone where the boundary was to which Fulton County would provide sewer service in the city of Milton, and we did that by way of intergovernmental agreement years ago. However, not all the issues were so easily resolved, and some of the other cities had ongoing problems with Fulton County. I think they've all been ironed out, and it is now time to send our final report to the Department of Community Affairs, and that requires one final sign-off by the mayor, which I brought to you sort of just to put a bow on this as we close this down. I will tell you, councilmembers, just for your own edification, that this council did approve the SDS in April of last year, so this is nothing you need to review again, you've already signed off on it. This is simply the last piece of paper that the city needs to sign before this will be done. Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any questions for Ken on this? Okay, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I move that we authorize you to execute Form 4, Agenda Item Number 18-807, or 087.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Legoria, a second from Councilmember Coontz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thanks, Ken. Suti, if you'll please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of a resolution regarding Senate Bill 426, the Broadband Infrastructure Leads to Development Act, also known as BILD, Agenda Item Number 18088, Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I know that you have been receiving regular updates from GMA and perhaps other entities as they give you updates, pending legislation that is currently purking through the ongoing session. I know that when you get those updates, I think you'd receive some from various organizations, and I know that I had chimed in on a few of them. This one particularly, this is Senate Bill 426, otherwise called as the Broadband Infrastructure Leads to Development, or the Build Act. That is an act that is currently purking, and candidly, I believe that it has a fairly good chance of becoming law this year. That would, basically, and again, it's a fairly, it's a fairly meaty piece of legislation, so I don't expect to go through all of it with you tonight. But what I can tell you is, in some broad generalities, is that with respect to both county and city right-of-way, it would open up those rights-of-way of these governmental jurisdictions and allow wireless providers, think cellphone, telecommunications providers, to have access as a matter of state law to be able to put their towers within right-of-way. It's a significant bill. I know that it has been, I think, sort of the headwinds with respect to the, going to the General Assembly have been based on economic development, that the rollout of perhaps new technologies, particularly with respect to 5G technology, will be greatly expedited if these providers have access to municipal and county right-of-way. Obviously, it will save a lot of land use disputes, because I don't have to tell this council that the placement of new massive towers on private property always requires either a zoning or a conditional use permit, and of course, there's a lot of citizen involvement, and perhaps a lot of citizen pushback. This council, in fact, has seen its share of litigation with respect to that. Well, some of that will go away, but I'm not convinced that's a good thing, because that allows transparency, that allows public involvement, that allows the public to have their say, particularly with respect to Milton, which I know is very proud of and agreeably so with respect to your rural view sheds, et cetera. This is going to allow towers to go up in your right-of-way as a matter of right. Now, there will be some modest oversight and permitting requirements that you may be able to bring to bear, but I think this is a fairly industry-friendly piece of legislation. There have been a lot of people attempting to work on it at the General Assembly, and they have met with different levels of success. But again, I will tell you, I think that the tailwinds are with the industry on this one, and I think that this bill, some variation on this bill is likely to be adopted. So, just to give you a couple of the high points, and I think I've already mentioned one of them, and one of the high points is, is that there would be an availability to use your city taxpayer paid-for right-of-way as a matter of right, and counties, cities and counties. The height is curious, it's, again, it's a fairly complex bill, but the height of the towers can be 10 feet in height above the tallest existing pole that is 500 feet away. Well, I don't have to tell you, but whatever the pole may be, that is 500 feet away, it could be fairly large. There is an emphasis on co-location, and of course, meaning simply to strap the antenna, the wireless antenna on an existing pole. But at least the way I read the bill now, some of the major power utility companies are not required to participate, which means that I think the functionality and utility of mandatory co-location is marginalized at best, because if you drive down those streets, the number-one purveyor of poles along those streets is going to be, well, power utility companies, and if they're not in the bill, then I think the co-location at least is marginalized in some respect. There have been a lot of efforts to try to get a little more definitiveness out of that, but therefore, I'm not sure at this point that's been successful. There is some accommodation for stealth technology, but it's basically in historical areas or residential areas, and the stealth technology requirements only apply if we are requiring stealth technology to go on all poles, including any utility poles owned by municipalities. Well, I mean, I can paint a distinction between municipal poles that are funded by taxpayers versus private, for-profit corporation poles that are not. So, again, I see the moral equivalency that's being provided there, but I'm not sure I'm buying into the notion that if we're going to impose stealth technology, everybody has that if we're going to impose stealth technology, everybody has to have stealth technology. Having said all that, lots to the bill. This resolution, and again, this resolution that has been prepared by me for your consideration at the request of some of the council members, basically voices an objection to this bill, as it is currently framed. And would the council mind if I go over with you, kind of what it, what it says? So, obviously, the preamble, I think I picked up the wrong bill, the preamble provides a little bit of background with respect to the bill, but with respect to the actual reasons for the objection. And again, the objection would simply be something to provide to your local delegation, to basically put them on notice that the city of Milton has some reservations about this legislation. Number one, this is on page two of the proposed resolution, the city council hereby voices its formal objection. That's the easy one, formal objection. Number two, the basis for that, the objection is, is that the legislation does not strike an appropriate balance between the need for deployment of wireless broadband infrastructure and the needs for local government to manage its own right-of-way. I don't have to tell this council, but right-of-ways are fairly full right now. A lot of it's not above ground, a lot of it is below ground, and there's a lot of sensitive infrastructure in that right-of-way. So, they do get, you know, sort of crowded. Number three, the legislation unduly benefits private, for-profit wireless industry at the expense of the rural view sheds' anesthetic and public policy considerations of the city of Milton. Again, I didn't draft this with, with an idea that the city of Milton would be against any variation on this bill. I think that the city of Milton would understand that there certainly are economic development opportunities that are enhanced by the availability of five G. My twelve-year-old thinks she cannot live without five G, so I get that. But having said that, I'm not sure if this legislation precisely captures the right balance between the need for those economic opportunity, development opportunities, and your need to protect the view sheds that you have fought so terribly hard for. The bottom line is, is this proposed resolution would ask for your delegation to take a look at this bill from stem to stern, and to basically do what it can, whatever is within its power, to make it more not pro-Milton friendly, but pro-citizen friendly. Those are the individuals that have funded this right-of-way, and those are the individuals that, when these towers begin to go up as a matter of right, may have some concerns with them, and it will be literally beyond our control at that point. Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Do any questions from Ken? I would say that I have, I have spoken with our senators about it, and they understand the situation, and they are committed to working to kind of balance this out a little bit. But, this is, you know, certainly a good thing for us to do this. I think they were originally going after extreme situations, and as we all know, sometimes you, you try to address something, that's in one situation, it doesn't fit all, all the rest. So, they are working on that, but we'll open up for questions as far as you have.
So, thank you very much. I, I think the resolution does address the new poles, the lack of incentives for the co-location of poles, and then also the compensation issue, because it's our job to manage these right-of-ways, and now we are handing that over to privately-held companies, which, you know, I have a problem with that. I'm all for five G too, but I've also worked for one of those big companies as well. So, I'm not sure that there is a balance with this legislation as it currently stands. So, thank you very much for this resolution, and my question is, how do we, where does this go? I know it's passed the Senate, and it passed it easily. So, now it's sitting in a House committee?
My assumption would be there's probably competing legislation in the House and Senate, and they will probably need to go to some sort of a reconcil, reconciliation process to try and work out all the differences between the two chambers. So, my expectation would be that if this, your resolution is adopted, that we would get into the hands of our delegation formally, by way of a letter, perhaps from the mayor or the city manager, as quickly as we could, and then just let them be, be part of the process.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, I'll open up for a motion then.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item eighteen dash zero eight eight, Consideration of a Resolution Regarding Senate Bill four-twenty-six, the Broadband Infrastructure Leads to Development Act.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Bentley, with a second from Councilmember Coontz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimous. Sudi, if you'll please call the final new business item.
Our final item this evening is consideration of a resolution and policy of the city of Milton, authorizing certain community partners to receive limited personal information for authorized purposes. This is Agenda Item Number eighteen zero eight nine. Ms. Stacy Ingles.
Thank you, Sudi. I'm actually going to ask Ken Gerard to address this, please.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. I will take you through this very quickly as well. This is a resolution that is meant to basically put some structure with respect to how the city of Milton engages certain of our community partners with respect to sharing of citizen information. I don't have to tell this council, but as part of just the function of government, it does occur from time to time that we are in possession of a lot of citizen information. All governments are. That's just the nature of the animal. We're going to collect that. And it is also the case that the city of Milton, unlike, no, like, like every other government in Georgia, occasionally accomplishes its municipal or governmental objectives by way of having either partners in the private sector, private for-profit corporations, or not-for-profit corporations assist us in accomplishing our mission. Further, in advancement of those objectives, is occasionally we have to provide and share some of the information from our citizens that we collect with those corporate or nonprofit partners. However, in doing that, I think that your senior city staff have determined that it is probably a good time to, to formalize and sort of apply a more formalistic procedure to not only if we will do it, which I think the answer is, is yes, out of sheer necessity, but also the terms upon which we will share that information. And candidly, the majority of information we're talking about is not what I would consider to be the super-sensitive information, because that's not going to be provided, in information like financial data, social security numbers, things that implicate true, true privacy considerations. But we're talking about basically contact information, information like emails, et cetera, that occasionally private partners with the city have a legitimate interest in having, in order for them to fulfill services on behalf of, candidly, the city. To do that, however, and to provide some additional structure, and candidly, some safeguards to ensure that that information is zealously protected, this resolution was put together. And what this resolution does is, first of all, basically just says what I said in more of resolution format. But then it also says that in the future, going forward, when we have corporate or community partners that are engaged or have information that has been provided by us, that is the least bit sensitive in nature, and what I mean by that is, is information someone cannot readily get by way of, say, an Open Records Act request, that might in fact be redacted if they had requested it that way, we are going to require those community partners to enter into a memorandum of understanding with us that outlines a variety of things. And if you go to the second page of this resolution, on sub-paragraph four, you will see at least some of the safeguards that we are going to build into this MOU. For instance, they have to tell us, and we have to agree as a government, what are you doing for us? Why do you have a bona fide need for the information that we may make available to you? How are you going to protect it? How are you going to ensure it is not further disseminated to other individuals that don't have a bona fide need for it? Where is it going to be protected? Where is it going to be preserved? How are you going to manage your IT systems to the extent to make sure that no one can have access to that that doesn't have a legitimate need to? All of the things that we think will provide structure and candidly confidence in how our citizens view our use of their information. So, that's what this resolution does. The MOU is not perfected yet, but it will probably be a formalistic MOU that can be applied to various different entities, and it'll all be pretty much the same. But this is a step, and I think it is a very important step that we go ahead and do this, just to make rock-solid sure that we are taking good care of the information that your citizens entrust to you. So, Mr. Mayor, based upon that, it is my recommendation, after council questions, that this be approved.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments on this? If there's clear on it. Joe?
So, Ken, these kinds of policies usually have to be very comprehensive, and they've got to hold third-party, um, third parties to the same standard that we hold ourselves.
At a minimum.
Do, do you think that's something that we could reasonably expect?
I do, and one of the keys is going to be the, candidly, the consequences if they don't. And so, that's going to be in the MOU, and that's why it needs to be formalized with something that is binding, because if a entity does not safeguard the information with at least as rigid a compliance mechanisms that we use, then they need to ensure, they need to understand that they run the risk of, number one, forfeiting the right to be a community partner with us at all. Number, number two, there are some very significant consequences for blatant and knowing violations of the Act, and they need to put on notice of those as, as well. And I won't get into the grisly details right now, but just to understand that in the MOU, we will make sure they understand that in addition to potentially ending their partnership affiliation with us, there are other consequences that could arise if they don't safeguard this information extremely carefully.
Did we consider how we run these programs if we didn't want to share that information with these third parties? And, and the reason I ask that is, you're correct, you stated that a lot of this information really isn't what we would consider in the industry personally identifiable information. In other words, it's, there's no account numbers, there's no social security numbers. It's mostly things that you can get from the phone book, with the exception of an email address. So, I just know that a lot of our third-party partners aren't that sophisticated. I mean, when you look at, I mean, just, well, we don't need to go into the detail.
Are you asking?
I'm just a little worried that we're, we're asking for people to do things that they're not going to be able to do.
Well, you know, I think, I think one of the advantages of this process, though, is it will have a, a, a self-betting and filtering aspect to it. If they can't do it, and if they can't meet the terms of the MOU, then perhaps they won't seek to have the information at all, which would be, candidly, my guidance, because we, hopefully, will set the bar reasonably high. You're right, though, I want to, I want to reemphasize this as well. We're not talking about releasing social security numbers. We're not talking about releasing information that I believe would give rise to a reasonable threat of identity theft. We're talking about, candidly, releasing information that a lot of citizens release to each other all the time.
Right.
Very, very freely, but we, as a government, have additional layers of protection that limit our ability to disseminate it further. So, I hope that's a somewhat answer to your question.
Yeah, as, and I know a lot of us have done this, we've built five oh one C threes and things like that in this community. There are, I like the MOU idea that we have, but I have one concern with it. I want to make sure that with this information that our citizens do share freely on a regular basis. Sometimes, it's the idea that something could get started from scratch, and people are enthusiastic and join in with it, and in some situations, like with the Friends of the Milton Library, people would go to the city and say, how do I join this? And the city would transfer that information to an entity that then would be involved in that excitement. And then, of course, you run into the situations where you have the entity, small, growing, fledgling, all of a sudden, kind of, still trying to figure out their way, and then maybe encapsulated in, in the bureaucracy, that is what we are, in that sense, unknowingly or unwittingly. I think what's good about the MOU is that it creates a structure up front that an entity can understand, hey, if you are going to do something with the city, we do have guidelines that we have. I think that's good. What I don't, what I do have a concern with is, though, if, it might be conducive on our part to still state that we can do some kind of relationship with that entity, just not share the information. And, say, for example, you know, you have a group that does a certain service in the community, citizens come to the city, how do we do it? Rather than passing that information along and collecting it on behalf of the entity, direct them to go to the entity directly.
Yeah, I think that's a great point, and, and I, I think that's not at all forfeit by this resolution.
Right.
And again, that'll be more to the senior city staff to determine who they need to, to partner with. But, no, my vision for this is that it will be required if that partner wants this information, and, and to be retained in a way that is not retained by the city.
Right.
But if it's with the city, and they can't access it, or manipulate it, or disseminate it further, my vision would be, they wouldn't need to execute this MOU at all.
Right.
That's the way I would do this.
Or, or maybe we can come together with a different MOU that can put those boundaries in a way that would benefit both parties as well. So, we can have it, but we can always make the changes to it if we need to. Just make sure we're flexible, because these fledgling organizations, we want to see our citizens of talent, and our community is so great, but they don't always know what they don't know.
Well, it's no one's intention, I can tell you this, to scare away.
Right.
Fledgling entities that will be intimidated by a forty-five-page legal treatise. I, I get that.
Right.
And no one wants to do that. In fact, my vision for this, after hearing about it from, you know, Ms. Ingles and the city manager, was that this would be a fairly, not an intimidating, oppressive document, but none the less one that was necessary to protect the city.
Sure.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you, Ken. I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve Agenda Item Number eighteen dash zero eight nine.
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Coontz for approval, second from Councilmember Longoria. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to reports. I, I want to mention there was some public comment on our new tree ordinance. I don't know if you guys remember when we passed it, and I made the statement that, you know, this is all good, but sometimes we'll find out real quick the ramifications, and, you know, those that are affected. So, just so you guys know, I have, the city manager and I have discussed, and we're going to meet with the consultant and all that, and go through it. So, that, that is being addressed. Is anything council wants to report on tonight? Rick?
Yeah, I'd like to highlight, last Friday, March second, from three-thirty to five-thirty, we had a number of members of Milton city staff participated in a mealpacking thing called Rise Against Hunger, and those were, were where we packed meals that go to feed children from around the world. It was sponsored by the Milton Rotary, of which our assistant city manager, Stacy Ingles, is our president of the Milton Rotary, and she was there and helped organize the whole thing. And we had a lot of our first responders there, helping out. The police and the firefighters were there, actually helping. As we had a bunch of students and adults there packing these meals, it was a great event, well-attended. We had, our fire chief was there, pouring the, the rice in the bins. And the program, what, what it does is, we pack, we had groups of tables where the students and adults would help pack these meals, and it would first have a protein, then we'd have a vegetable, and then a starch, which would be the, the rice, and then there also was a vitamin pack. And I'd like to report that we packaged twenty-two thousand meals that would go to feed children. And I don't know if we know exactly where in the world we're going to be sending these yet, or?
They were slated to go to Swaziland.
Swaziland, okay. But it was, I think we, we did, what, nineteen thousand the year before?
We did about ten thousand the year before.
Ten thousand, so it was a huge increase. But it was, it was a great event just to see kids. We had, from elementary age through high school, and it was at Cambridge High School's cafeteria, very well-attended. Again, I was proud that we had folks from the city of Milton that were helping there, from our first responder team actually being involved. And just, it was a great community event, pulled us together, and those of us who were there got to wear these beautiful red Food Net hats. So, I'm sure there's some pictures that will be floating around there. But anyway, I just wanted to thank the folks from the city staff, and from our first responders that were there that helped out in that event.
Okay. Matt?
I should have mentioned this last time as well, but thanks to the city staff for allowing me to come in here with the Weebolos Pack Three Thousand on Sunday, a week ago. Even though we set the alarms off twice, the kids had a great time, and we even had our own mock election here on an actual city of Milton issue, which was a question on sports fields versus trees. And it came down to the wire, and they had a mock vote, and the parents got to vote, and the trees won, which was interesting. So, but it was, we had the kids up here actually give a speech, a campaign speech and all that, and learning about government, and they learned a ton. And we gave them a tour around, and, you know, Pack Three Thousand, and now Tree Three Thousand. These kids are, are doing a lot of great things in the city, and it's great to see our kids grow to become leaders in our own community, because that's what we want them to do, is come back here and continue to, to lead and sit in our seats one day. So, it was a good time.
Good deal. Also, want to add too, last Monday, we had our first State of the City Address, and want to thank everybody that was involved with that, and a lot of staff time went into it, and a lot of citizens showed up, so. And a lot of staff time went into it and a lot of citizens showed up, so thank everybody for that. I believe it was a great success. I'll move on to staff. Steve, if you've got anything or department heads.
We can roll right into our first one.
I'm back. Better Together was also at the Rise Against Hunger event. I was proud that they could, they could attend. Great group of community volunteers who never fail to assist wherever they're needed. I'm just going to give a brief recap of what has happened since I last reported. Our Veterans Breakfast last November was very well-attended, as was the Literary Festival. Combining Christmas and Crab Apple with our tree lighting, with all those community groups, went very well, I thought, with our new tree. It was beautiful at Broadwell. Our Pancake Breakfast with the firefighters got snowed out, unfortunately, sorry. Fortunately, it happened before we purchased the food for it, so that was, that was good. The Milton Equestrian Committee had a cleanup day at Birmingham Park that was wildly successful. We had over 50 volunteers. They cleaned almost every foot of trails in that park, and that is, it's extensive. They brought equipment, they brought a group called Friends from Garland Mountain, who has helped clear those trails at Garland Mountain. And Waleska helped bring them all together. Larry Covington from the Equestrian Committee helped organize that, but it was very, very successful. And some of our committee members have been on rides since then and talked about how much, how improved it is. And now that the trails are ridable, it's a workable park, thanks to some of their help. The Mayor's Run Presents Jog for a Cause was also successful. We had 150 actual runners and almost 50 phantom runners. That's people who pay, who pay and don't run, which I can certainly relate to. But they donate to the cause. This was the Jog for a Cause, this was our 15th annual event benefiting pediatric cancer patients in the area. So we are proud to partner with Dr. Greg Cabrera, his staff member Ginger McGee, and North Point Pediatrics, who help with us with that event every year. And I'm thankful to our community that makes it so successful. In addition, we're supporting and collaborating with all the other departments. You heard about Citizens Government Academy, State of the City, we help with all those. Looking ahead to our, to our spring and summer events, we have Earth Day, April 21st, right here at City Hall. The Fulton Golden Games will be assisting Parks and Rec. Their opening ceremony will be April 25th at Bell Memorial Park. And then they'll have a month of senior-related sports activities all during May. Milton Rock for Rescues, our new event, is April 28th on Broadwell Road. You'll see a lot of press about that. Memorial Day is May 28th. And our Beach Bash at Bell is, which, thank you for letting me get a band for that, which was approved and consent agenda, is at Bell Memorial Park on June 16th. And that's it for summer events. We're, I hope to plan that the Milton Equestrian Committee will have another project, another Citizens Government Class, growing our Better Together group and helping it expand to connect groups and committees and nonprofits with volunteers in the community. And then finding always, my goal is finding new ways to engage citizens, especially those that are, that are hard to reach digitally, that we can, we can find different ways to connect with them. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Carter. Okay, Carter?
Back. Sarah's off tonight, so I'm back. Let's see if this will, if I can get the Enzo up here. Do I have to do anything to it, Dave? I was.
Just download the Screen Mirror app.
Well, let me just go through our program here. Our T-Sploß update for the month, we had revenues of a little over 516,000. That was down from 690,000, which was the projected revenue. Most likely anticipated big holiday sales for that, but did not come through. At this point, we're tracking about 86% of our projected revenue. So while we've collected a little over $5 million in revenue in the T-Sploß, we had expected just short of 6 million by now, so we're down about $800,000. I am more and more resigned to the fact that we will be targeting and tracking along that 85% mark, which means just our Tier One projects would get accomplished under that, although the county is contracting with Georgia State to look at those revenue projections that they had originally come up with to see why we are much further off than we really anticipated. So if you'll remember, we had our three tiers. Tier One was if we got to 85% of the collection. Tier Two is if we got to 100% of the anticipated collection. And then Tier Three was if we got to 115%. So, as that report comes back in and we understand a little bit more about the long-term projections, if we're going to stay on the 85%, we'll come back and we'll start looking at those tiers to make sure that the Tier One projects are truly, you know, those that we want to accomplish in this five-year span, or if we want to look at moving some of the Tier Two or Tier Three up. So, anticipate that probably, I would guess around the summertime, we'll have some of those discussions to see where we are with those. Just a few quick comments on, well, maybe on nothing, but a couple of the projects that we've had some questions recently. In our T-Sploß projects, the Hopewell at Thompson and Hopewell at Hamby projects are currently under contract and they're going to start doing some traffic counts up there. We anticipate that we'll be doing some of our public outreach in the May-June timeframe with those two projects. The Hopewell at the Bethany's is a project that we brought forward a few years ago. And the preferred alternative that came out of that was a little bit more complex than we thought we may be ready for at that time. That is currently back in concept. It's one of our T-Sploß projects, and we're bringing on our peer review to go over that concept a little bit earlier in this process because of its complexity. Once we get through that peer review, we'll begin public information on that, that particular intersection again. The Crab Apple, the Northeast Crab Apple Project, which is also the Charlotte Mayfield Roundabout, we're working on final plans right now. Expect to go to right-of-way acquisition in the May-June timeframe also. We've had a number of discussions with those property owners over the years, so we would anticipate that that right-of-way acquisition process would go relatively quickly. I think they want to bid more than we do for some development potential over on that side, so we're hoping that goes relatively quickly so that we can see that project go to bid this summer, probably towards the end of the summer. The sidewalk project on our Mayfield is progressing. We still anticipate that that project will be done here in March, so that is a very nice addition to that area. And the Freemanville Road, Providence Road intersection, we anticipate that going out a bit in a couple of weeks. We're bundling that with a Morris Road, Webb Road intersection improvement, which would be the beginning of that T-Sploß project. We're looking at a roundabout in that particular area to get rid of the four-way stop that's over there. That intersection is so large, we anticipate being able to do most of that work, if not all that work, in the existing right-of-way. So, both of those will be going out as a bid package here in mid-March. And that's it.
Any questions for Carter?
I have a question. Hopewell and the Bethany's, that's Tier One, and what was the timeframe?
We're, we're doing the peer review right now, so I would anticipate that's going to take a month or two to get done. Oh, it sounds like everything's coming out in mid-June, May and June timeframe, so...
And what happens after the peer review?
We'll come back out with some public information and some public input.
Any other questions for Carter? All right.
Thank you.
Chief, Edger.
Can I say I'm back? Keeping with our theme for grants, if you remember, our Firehouse Grant application was approved and we received the funds and a order has been placed for our ballistic vests and helmets, so we should be receiving those by the end of the month. In addition to that same theme of school shootings type events and those types, we are meeting with Fulton County Schools this week to review the evacuation drills and the fire drills, the way they perform those, and talking about changing the way they actually evacuate the schools during fire alarms. What they found in Parkland, Florida, was that when the alarms were pulled, the kids just filed out in single file, as they do, as we've been taught for years, as school-age kids file out and go out to the exits. So what they're looking at, the way that schools are constructed today, there's actually separate buildings. So wherever that alarm is particularly going off, they will evacuate that one particular building, but not evacuate the entire school. So, and hopefully sheltering in place in some areas for the kids. So, we're meeting with them, with the, with staff to talk about that and see how that impacts some of our fire drills and such. And in addition to that, we are meeting with the police department, staff, and going over our active shooter policies and seeing, to make sure that they are still in line with each other and what's going on, as well as setting up some training that we'll be working together on to go over that, and then we'll tie in our vests and all that. So, unfortunately, it's, you know, it's something we have to do and be prepared for, and we're taking our, you know, making every effort to do that. In addition to that, our MDA boot drive started this past Friday, and our first group A ship out there collected $16,000 in one day. Pretty amazing start, so we're excited about this year. And with the outstanding work that our Public Works Department does with road paving and snow removal with his new team that he has, we are kicking off our Blue Hydrant Marker Replacement Program this year. And while we're out there, we'll go ahead and do our hydrant maintenance as well. So, we're out there in the community and we've already received a couple of comments regarding the water and, you know, the dirty water coming out of their faucets and all that. But we're trying to minimize that as much as possible and just doing our pressure tests as we're required by ISO to do annually, so, and that's it. If you have any questions.
Any questions? Rick?
Just a comment, I think it's great that you're working with Shannon and trying to get the word out. I actually saw a report on the evening news that highlighted Milton and our fire hydrant policy and what to do as far as the water, et cetera. Appreciate you guys getting that word out.
Yeah, I think it was a slow news day.
All right. Anybody else? And for those in the audience that don't know, when the chief mentioned the blue markers for the fire hydrant, it says it's the little reflectors on the roads. And most people don't know, but Public Works, when they're out there plowing and snowing and they hit them and they're going, "Got one, got one." But then the firemen are back grumbling going, "There's another one we got to replace." So it's a little battle back and forth, so...
Thank you.
Anything staff or anybody else has? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Sarah.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for having me. A few things to go over again, since I've been here last. You guys have probably received lots of invitations to grand openings over at Crab Apple Market. We've had, as of last Friday, Laurel, actually last Monday, Laurel May Market opened, but their grand opening on Friday, the Crab Apple, American Barber Shop, and then right across the way, Blow Me Away opened up. And you should have on your calendars for April 12th, a grand opening in Deerfield, which I'm excited about. It's a little different, it's an actual business, not like a, not a, sorry, that came out very wrong. Not a, like, retail establishment. So most of our grand openings are retail establishments and this is fun, it's a website developer, Brain Jocks, and they moved here from a little further north and brought a bunch of really high-paying jobs, so we're excited about that one. Coming up on March 22nd, we're doing a new program with MBA and CCA called Launch, where we are going to invite all new, all new business licenses for the past two years to come to City Hall to have a very brief introduction to the city, to MBA and CCA, give them a cup of coffee, and then network. But that way, all of those two-year-old businesses, we're going to do this twice a year. This one specifically is March 22nd because business licenses are late as of January 1st, but the forgiveness period is up the end of March, so hopefully this will give them another week to remind them that their occupational taxes are due. But to introduce them to the city, to let them know who we are and what we're available to do to them. And then this Thursday night, we didn't directly do this, but I just wanted to let you know that Downtown Crab Apple is going to be having their first open house from 5 to 8 o'clock. It's a lot, it's cool to watch, like, all of these businesses down here work together for the betterment of the community, so hopefully you guys will be able to participate in that. Last week, at Steve's request, I started working on my economic development certification, and I had, took a course down at Georgia Tech, and beyond, some cool ideas that I brought back to Steve. I met the contact publisher for Georgia Power, so coming up in the next couple quarters, we'll have a nice feature on their website about Milton and stuff that we have going on, which is pretty exciting. Is that good? Y'all want more? I have more, if you want more. This Friday, I leave for Austin for Southwest, again, that's our annual thing that we do with the Metro Atlanta Chamber and the Choose ATL campaign. Saturday and Sunday, we're doing a job fair booth with, so the companies, we Manhattan and Associates, Georgia Power, and Home Depot. They'll have actual, real-life jobs available that they'll be interviewing for at the, at South Bay. And we'll be there to talk to those people about the quality of life and things to do in Georgia. The whole point of that is we have a lot of companies coming to Georgia and to North Fulton and to Metro Atlanta, making sure that we actually have the talent here to fill those jobs, because if you ask, there's, depending on who you ask, there are between 7,000 and 17,000 open tech jobs that are unfillable. So we need to fill that gap before companies stop coming here. That's the goal of Choose ATL. And then with Buxton Study, you guys, this is, we're in our second year this year. Last year we did Deerfield. And so, I went and I contacted them and we're in discussions with a few of them, but we released through our newsletter last month that any developer can reach out to us and we'll share those leads with them. We've had one person reach out and ask for that. And then this morning, I had a meeting with someone who's redeveloping a site in Deerfield and actually building an additional building, and shared with him the list, and we went through it and he picked some of them that he likes. And we're going to jointly reach out to those targets and hopefully help him fill some of his vacant space. Questions?
All right. Appreciate everything, Sarah. Thank you. All right, anybody else have anything, want to mention or report? If not, we'll conclude our meeting, so do I have a motion that we adjourn? Have a motion second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
unanimous, city. Thank you all for being here.